That's what we're doing.
Okay, well call us mean in order, please rise for the pledge allegiance and the invitation following. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials, grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens, amen.
Roll call, please.
Goodar, Green.
Here.
LaFleur.
Here.
Ms. Stravich.
Here.
Ricks.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Yar.
Here.
Motion to excuse Counselor Goodar for being out of town for work would be in order?
So moved, support.
Most been made and supported, is there any discussion on that? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against, motion does pass. We move on to approval of minutes for the regular meeting of September 16th, is there a motion?
So moved, support.
Most been made and supported, is there any discussions?
Mr. Mayor, as you called in today, there were three changes on page three of six, middle of the page under the second Yar comment, discuss the stress the state has placed. And then on page four of six at the bottom, last line towards the end of the line, board memberships, membership from instead of fro. And then on page five of six, the first line under council comments, all counselors thanked instead of that.
Is there anything else? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against, motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items, anybody like to address the city council at this time, please state your name and your address to the clerk for the record.
My name is Daniel Vandy Kirkov, my address is 57646 River Oaks Drive, that's in the village of New Haven, Michigan 48048. And with Citizens for a Better Macomb County, and basically we've, we're a grassroots organization basically composed of everyday citizens throughout the county now, we kind of grew from, I'm sure you've heard about the proposed landfill, it was first proposed in New Haven, then now it's countywide, Mark Hackel is in the process of considering if he's going to form a solid waste planning committee that's going to further consider options moving forward. Basically, at some point through the, in the process, if it goes along, if it reaches this point, which we're hoping it won't, but somewhere along down, down along the line in the process of this proposed landfill that they're trying to put in, it would come to a vote of two-thirds of the municipalities that would be necessary in order to place the landfill where Rizzo is preferring the location to be, in Macomb County, which is right off of Grashit, between 28 and 29 mile road, or I'm sorry, 27 and 28 mile road, right off the Grashit corridor there. Two-thirds of the community's votes would be necessary in order to place it there against the will of the township themselves, who they've already passed a resolution against it. That's why I'm coming here to you guys to hopefully inform you some, some of things that, and answer any possible questions you might have, in order to hopefully convince you to offer your support to Lennox Township in this matter. Basically, like I said, there's a, Rizzo landfill proposes a one square mile landfill between 27 and 28 mile road right off Grashit, Lennox on September 3rd already passed a two-page resolution strongly voicing their opposition toward it. Lennox is not zoned for, nor is it allotted for in their master plan in order to allow for such a landfill, they've actually fought tooth and nail against Pine Tree Acres, which is already currently there, they have no appetite for it, and they've openly said so. Basically, the cost of this proposal would be that home values would decrease, the quality of life would decrease, you'd see a lot more increased trash trucks along Grashit corridor, and you'd lose a large opportunity of development, again, being that it is Grashit, which is a main corridor all the way from Port Huron all the way down to Detroit, it's prime real estate, it could be used for many other things like it's already currently zoned for. There's also no need for this, this projected project, is that the region is actually disposal neutral, you can actually find a quote from Kinderhook, which is actually the owner of Rizzo Environmental Services, they're actually a New York investment firm worth almost $800 million. Kinderhook's, I don't have the quote in front of me, but he was quoted as recently as 2012 as saying that this region is disposal neutral, is the terms that he used, saying that, I can actually pull the exact quote, in any case, there's, there's no, there's no need for waste haulers to actually own and operate their own landfills. That was just one year ago, and now all of a sudden they want to put a landfill in there. But in any case, there's already eight other landfills in the southeast Michigan region, and also in an incinerator. Also, important to note, that Rizzo's going around saying that there needs to be competition in Macomb County, there's nothing in Macomb County, there's, there's currently no restrictions put upon different waste haulers that they have to use a landfill within the county. Pine Tree Acres is the only landfill in Macomb County, but they are by no means obligated to use them as their deposit site for the waste that they collect. In fact, Macomb County is actually disposal, it's, it's an exporter, over half the, the waste that's brought in is actually already being exported to various landfills and the incinerator, like I said, outside of the county, so there's, there's, again, there's no need, but even, even if you were to focus on Pine Tree Acres themselves, they have nearly 50 acres of capacity left, the state requires 10. Right now, they have, they have permitted capacity, which is about 12 to 15 years, that's without the stroke of even so much as a pen, they have 12 to 15 years of storage, they have cited capacity, which is about 15 additional years, which all they have to do is pull permit for, which they can, generally, in speaking with them, it seems like it's, it's going to be a fairly routine thing, but they do so more, much more closer to the time that they need it, and then additional capacity of about 20 more years, which they're, it's already cited for, it's already owned for them, it's already agreed to in the host community agreement with Lennox Township, they just have to, again, pull the permit and then adjust the solid waste plan accordingly with the county. So, there's no need for it, solid waste is also declining 30% over the last eight years, you know, with the different recycling and zero landfill policies by a lot of manufacturers and whatnot, there's no need for it, it's declining, we got about 50 years already, there's other landfills in the region and they're not limited to, to use that. Also, a big point that Rizzo pushes is the savings, they say that they might be able to save 25 to 30%, that's 25 to 30% off of landfill disposal costs, which is actually a small fraction of what, if you look at the bills that come for home disposal of residential waste, is actually a large, a much larger portion of, is actually due to the actual pickup, you know, the trucks, the workers that are used, maintenance on the trucks, fuel and whatnot, they're not going to be saving on that, they're, they're just saving on what it costs to put it in the ground, and actually, talking to experts in the field, in the waste management field, I've been told that it costs nowhere more than $20 a ton to do so for one household per year, in an average year, $20 a ton to, to put waste into the ground. And also, being the fact that an average household generates about one ton per year, that'd be about $20, if they save 20 to 35%, do the math, you're saving less than $10 a year, and at what cost? You're going to have a one square mile landfill being put into a, a community who's not zoned for it, who has no appetite for it, who passed a two-page resolution saying that they, they want nothing to do with it, you're going to lose development, you're going to decrease the quality of life, home values and all that. So basically, at this point, in the packet that was given to you, an email that believe out to you guys, we've included a proposed resolution, I know that one's a little lengthier, although all the facts in there are true and everything, we, I did just give the clerk a condensed one, and it's actually got a different approach, whereas that one was saying, you know, if you guys are willing to pass it or edit it, adjust it as you guys so choose, that would, that would be opposing the, adjusting the solid, Macomb Community, Macomb County solid waste plan, this one basically says that you, you guys are just supporting Lennox in their decision that they don't want it in their community, and they should have the right to choose that. So, either a resolution or at least some form of statement, public statement made, or a letter back to Hackel saying that you guys would be in support of Lennox's decision to oppose it at this time.
We're going to be discussing this in depth at our quarterly roundtable meeting, which is next week, I believe, on the 15th, I believe you've been invited to that, or been informed of the, the meeting there, and we'll discuss it at that, at that time, and then probably, if the council so wishes, take formal action on the 21st of October, if council wishes. But I think we're all in general agreement, we're not real happy with the idea of more, we weren't happy with what we have to smell here in Richmond, and, you know, receive no benefit whatsoever, so, yeah, you're kind of talking to the choir.
Okay, well, thank you for your time, if you do have any other questions, my contact, you should have that, if not, yeah, feel free to contact and ask any questions you have.
Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I did have one question.
Go ahead.
My, you've thrown out a lot of numbers, and I'm wondering, is that, is that information available at abettermacomb.org?
It's, the, we're actually in the process of revamping, we're actually taking, it was, it was offered to us to, to revamp the website, and we took that, so it'll be switched up here shortly, some of the information is, like I said, changes are coming, if, if it's not there, whatever, whatever you're looking for, shoot a, shoot an email to me, we do have a contact us form currently, and it should be on there on the new one, I'm not as involved in the, the new one that's getting put out there, but, yeah, definitely send an email, I can get you verification on any of the numbers that I provided there.
Okay, but I'd like to know the sources, and also, there's a lot of numbers thrown out here that isn't in this packet, so it'd be nice to have all that together.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure, yep, specifically, whatever you're concerned about, let me, let me know, because I, I mean, yeah.
Just have a lot of good information, and just can't write it fast enough, and it's not in this packet, I'd love to have that.
Right, okay, okay, definitely, yep.
Anybody else like to address city council at this time? We'll move on. Doctoring the agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City council, any changes? Being not, a motion to accept the agenda as presented, be in order.
So moved.
Support.
Most been made and supported, is there any discussion? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against, motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Most been made and supported, there's no discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Against, motion does pass. We have six items for consideration this evening, the first one being consideration of SMART 2014 municipal credit and community credit contract, Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to approve the SMART municipal credit and community credit contract for 2014, for fiscal year 2013-14, the city will be receiving $14,886 in municipal and community credits, which is the same amount we received last year.
Thank you, sir. Mr. White, do you want to say anything before council discuss this?
I think, I'd given to City Manager more just before the meeting started, just some numbers we put together today for council's review that indicated the number of rides provided in your community in the past, in the past fiscal year, there was actually 3,061 rides provided in the city of Richmond over the, over the previous year, so, so a really good number, means our community's really using the transit to really its fullest extent. Also, on the backside of that, because I get a lot of questions at meetings about the hours of operation, basically, you, person by calling the number 586-749-7713 can get a ride just about any day between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Saturdays, that's expanded from, from, in years, years in the past, and all I would do is encourage folks to call early when they know they have an appointment, normally, three or four days in advance is good, but I always tell people, if you have, if you have an appointment that you need to get to a month from now, call us a month in advance, we'll, we'll, we'll get you on the schedule and, and make sure you get there on time and, and get brought home in a timely fashion as well. With that, thank you for your consideration this year, and we'll, at, with your approval, continue providing the service to the city of Richmond and its residents.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
I make, I make a motion to approve the SMART municipal credit and community credit contract for fiscal year 2014, and agree to transfer the amounts of $5,662 in municipal credits and $9,224 in community credits to the Richmond Lennox EMS in payment for their community transit service.
Support.
Most been made and supported, discussion?
I just have one question, what is the radius of the?
Of the service?
Yeah.
Generally speaking, we'll go out as far as kind of St. Clair to our east, and we'll go down as far as kind of the Hall Road corridor to our south, or actually, the, I should say, I'm sorry, the Metro Parkway corridor, we go down to what we call the hospital area, and that's because a lot of our residents here in the Richmond area have their personal physicians and relationships with their health care, down with Henry Ford Hospital at 19 and Garfield, or with McLaren Macomb Hospital at, at Grossbeck and Harrington, and so we try to get people into that area. We don't go much farther south than that, although we will, on a special occasion, go a little farther south than that if we need to, to get somebody to do an appointment, but if we, if we start extending our border out too much farther than that, it just takes the vehicles out of service so long, we really, we don't get as big a bang for our buck with as many folks being able to ride.
And how far north?
I'm sorry, we'll go up to the Port Huron area, to those, to those hospital areas, we don't get a lot of requests up there, so I would only suggest that if somebody needs a ride up that way, they give us a little more notice than normal, just because we don't have a lot of people that request to go that way. We'll also go out as far as like the Hall Road and Dequinder area, to get people out around the Troy Beaumont facility there, around the hospital facilities tend to be where the, the medical office buildings tend to be, where people need to get to for dialysis or oncology or other, other appointments.
Fantastic, thank you.
We want to thank you, you saved us by the sounds of it, you and one other person, initiated by the sounds of it, according to Mr. Barbette from SMART, and we know firsthand that you were on top of it the whole time, Jeff, and you've got a hold of the right people at the state, and, and saved us from all the cuts, which would have been very adverse to what was started years ago, and has turned into just a fantastic program for our citizens.
Well, thank you.
We want to thank you again for leading the charge there. That is in a letter that we've received from Mr. Barbette, and he's been around a long time too, he helped set this up, I'm sure you remember.
Yep.
And coming from him, I think that says a lot of what you did for the people of our, our area, you're to be commended for your ability to do what was necessary in Lansing and in our, in our community, so thanks so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a comment, just looking at the numbers, I see that in September and February, they have a, it's almost double the amount.
Sure, it's spike.
Is there a reason for that?
Yep, absolutely, in September, we do use the vehicles for, during the Richmond Good Old Days Festival weekend, to provide rides home from both the, the festival grounds, as well as to provide some assistance on Parade Day, moving some of the folks around that day, so those, because they originate in the city of Richmond, those are included as riders in Richmond. In February, this was the first year we saw that kind of spike in February, and really, it was a direct relation, I think, to the snowmobile races that went on along with the Ice Fest this year, we had, we had many more people than we expected, actually, riding the, the shuttles that we, that we operated, and in the past, they had just operated on the Ice Fest route, and this year, we decided that as long as they were going to be there on Main Street, we would swing them through where the snowmobile races were going on, at BB Street Park, and we were pleasantly surprised by the number of riders who, who got on there, and then ended up touring the Ice Fest, you know, as well, and might, I would surmise, might not have done that had the shuttle not been there to go take a quick ride on in between the races and, and other things that were going on, so I think that was a, kind of a great partnership between the, the, the Good Old Days and the Chamber, and, and like I say, we'll plan to do that again this year, we'll cross our fingers for, for cold anyways, now that we have a snowmaker in the, in the community, so.
Anything else? Go ahead, Jeff.
I too wanted to commend Jeff on his efforts on this, you know, he did let us know about it, and, you know, pushing Representative LaFontaine, Representative Boike, to, to work on this, I was also in Lansing at the time, we also let SEMCOG know that we're participants, we participate in SEMCOG and SEMCOG, I also jumped in on this fight to make calls and talk to people, and I'm doc director, there's, I should say, their liaison, so a lot of people heard about it, and also give credit to those representatives, because I went into Boike's office to talk about it, and his legislative liaison said, "All right, we already know about it, it's here, it's on the top of my desk." So, it, it's good to know that the voices were, were heard up there, and, and after man in Boike's office said, "I got it, we're working on it," I didn't have to beat on him any further, I already knew that Jeff had already hammered him for getting that going, so it was good to hear that $5,000, $5,600 get put back into that program.
Well, before, before you, before you vote on this, and a thank you again for, for your kind words, you know, it's kind of become near and dear to me since it started, and, and certainly, the, the good that it does within our community has, is evidenced by the number of riders, the good that it does in our community when we can, you know, get people's rides home, or get people to some of our community festivals and events that might not otherwise be able to get there, is, is, it makes you feel good when you, when you're able to do that, and, and so it's something that I really wanted to fight for. The, the one thing I would mention, and I'll be in contact, I'm sure, with the city manager and the mayor and council when, when the time is right, is we will be getting a new executive director at SMART, if you followed a little bit in the Macomb Daily of late, SMART's current executive director, a gentleman that we're familiar with here on the north end of the county named John Hurtel, has been moved to the Regional Transit Authority within the state government structure, and so that means we'll be getting a new executive director, and it's going to be important, I think, early on, that we educate that, that gentleman or lady that comes into that position, as to what we do, what we do with these funds, and how important they are to our community, so that we don't end up back in this fiscal battle again next year at budget time, so, so I'll probably be looking for the support of the council, as well as our neighboring communities, when that person is, is appointed, so, thank you.
Very good. Any other comments? Any audience participation on this item? Back to the table, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against, motion does pass. Item number two is consideration of fiscal, fiscal year 2013-14 winter season salt purchase, Mr. City Manager.
The state's salt supply contract for seasonal backup was awarded to the Detroit Salt Company, our cost for salt will be $38.22 per ton, which is a decrease of a little over $9 per ton from last year, under the My Deal purchasing program, we are required to take at least 70% of the amount we request, but are allowed to go 30% over that amount.
Very good, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize expenditures up to $26,754 to Detroit Salt Company for the purchase of rolled salt for the fiscal year 2013-14 winter season, with the expense charged to the appropriate line item, salt purchases DPW General Fund.
Support.
Most been made and supported, is there any discussion on this?
Nice to see you, one down, that doesn't happen.
Must have found more salt.
Need a you audience participation on this item? Back to the table, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against, motion does pass, hopefully we don't need that much salt issue. Item number three, consideration of increasing project budget, Clarkston Lane, Mr. City Manager.
Have all of the asphalt removed, when this project was first approved in the budget, the intent was to do this as a milling and resurfacing project, unfortunately, the asphalt, after some core samples were taken, was determined wasn't thick enough to do that, and so, administration is requesting an increase of $52,453 in order to be able to do this reconstruction project correctly.
Thank you, sir, is there a motion to amend?
I make a motion to amend the fiscal year 2013-14 street improvement fund budget by increasing line item, appropriate line item, transfer out of local street, transfer out, a street improvement fund from $74,094 to $126,547.
Support.
Most been made and supported, is there any discussion on this item? Any audience comments on this? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against, motion does pass, we have a second motion.
I'll make a motion to amend the fiscal year 2013-14 local street fund budget by increasing appropriate line item, transfer in street improvement fund revenues, local street fund from $74,094 to $126,547, and increasing the appropriate line item, contractual services, capital improvements, local street fund, from $74,094 to $126,547.
Support.
Thank you. Discussion? Audience comments on this item? Back to the table, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against, motion does pass. We move on to consideration of prudent request for funding for storm sewer engineering for Pound Road, Mr. City Manager.
Pound Road is scheduled for reconstruction commencing spring of 2016, a little more than two years from now, since this is such a large project, we've, administration felt it was advisable to have our city engineer and public service director go out and walk the project, looking for items that may need a little more work than others, and they found one, storm sewer, and so, we believe it's advisable to get some of that storm sewer engineering done now, rather than wait till the summer before the project like we normally would, in order to be able to make sure we have the proper budget for this project, and are able to work out any issues with storm, stormwater in a timely manner to keep this project on track. As such, administration is requesting authorization to proceed with this work, and an expense authorization of $20,000, and budget adjustments for transferring the money from the street improvement fund to the local street fund.
Very good, do we have any kind of presentation or anything?
Both Ken Kingsley and Paul are here, if they either care to, kind of just.
Can you tell us what the, the special, maybe what the special needs are here? Special circumstances?
Paul, I got sort of mixed up on getting a memo out, as such, but when, when Paul and I walked the site, it's a given that the drainage in Pound Road, while you have, you have, obviously, ditches on both sides, okay, there is minimal to, way short outlet capacity to get to the Gillette drain, just not there.
Which is on the north side of?
Which is, yes, on the north side, so there's going to most likely have to be a new drainage outlet, at least one, and that's probably going to require an easement, don't know where it's going to go yet, and we don't have any, there's been no improvements on Pound Road for eons of years, and there's no topo available to know where the drainage is actually, what is the worst spot for the drainage to be addressed, that affects storm sewer pipe size, and to be able to get out to the drain. I was able to meet with the county last Friday on a lot of other issues of projects I have with the counties, and I sort of broached that issue with the county drain engineer, and he suggested that basically that we get back to them, because with a new outlet, their jurisdiction is going to be beyond solely a tap to the drain, with the clean water standards that they have to meet and storm water quality, with a new tap to the drain, they are, they are going to have to assume jurisdiction for what we do, total storm drainage improvements within Pound Road. And there's a lot of latitude and gray area about how far the county can take that, the city already has better standards than other communities, and how to address storm drainage with size of catch basins and sumps and various things, that'll go in the city's benefit to keep storm water quality and improve it to the standards that Macomb County needs to meet, like I said, and the only reason Macomb County gets drug in that far into the system is because of need for a new outlet. And basically, getting that resolved now, to say, you know, next year, when, when you really get to full design, that, that item's been worked out with the county, and that's the way to proceed, we'll be able to really give an accurate estimate of the storm sewer cost, which affects the overall project cost to Pound Road, right now, we just don't know.
We have a drainage ditch basically from Maine all the way out to the east city limits? Or some of that?
Not really, the, the only main outlet that's out there on Pound Road right now is a 30-inch outlet, and that was the outlet that was constructed for Canterbury, way at the far end of the site, out, outside of that, about midway, there appears to be a 12-inch pipe, just a little bit east of Karen, as we come out, and that, that's it. Otherwise, a lot of the, the storm drainage on, on the Gillette side of Karen, I mean, Gillette side of Pound Road, just, the drainage just goes cross lot, literally, in a lot of spots, there's really, in some cases, no ditch. There's really in some cases, no ditches on, on that side of Pound Road. It's the ditch, ditch on the other side of Pound Road that eventually the water gets to Gillette drain. Question is how and at what, at what speed?
Yeah.
And all that needs to be addressed in a, in a presentation, a resolution with the county before that project would, would be able to proceed.
Okay. Is that going to fit into our time?
Yes.
I mean, that's obviously why you're here early asking.
Yeah, I basically, I would like to get this resolved and meet with Paul and meet with the county eventually and actually get this lined up in time for your budget year going up, going forward next year in terms of what you're going to see for that project because of the severe cost of the project.
Okay. Good.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions again? Thank you for being here, Ken. If you want. Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion to amend the fiscal year 13-14 street improvement fund by increasing the appropriate line item, transfer out local street, transfer out street improvement fund from $126,547 to 146, 146, $100,547.
You got it.
Support.
Thank you, Jamie. Discussion? Any comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go right ahead.
I'm a Pound Road resident. I have no financial interest in this project per the charter but if the council feels that I should be excused from the vote, I won't be offended.
I don't believe there's any, any reason for that. I don't believe there's any, you do not have any financial gain here, so. I think the charter's pretty clear on that, Jeff. You don't, you don't have to unless council can come up with some reason that I don't know of. No.
I just wanted to be open about it and...
Yeah. Well, we had other projects throughout the city that have been on other council people's so that's not, not something that usually fits into that category. But anyhow, appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Any comments from the audience? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. We have one more amendment needed.
I'll make a motion to amend fiscal year 13-14 local street fund budget by increasing appropriate line item, transfer in street improvement funds, revenues, local street fund from $126,547 to $146,547 and create appropriate item, constructional, Pound Road capital improvements, local street fund budget for $20,000.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Any discussion?
It's going to be major undertaking.
Been waiting for this one for a long time.
A real long time.
Paul's saying he's not going to be with us maybe for this project. Is that why you kept on pushing it back? Kept on telling us we didn't have enough money?
If you look back to some of the old plans, you'll see that this was a two-year project.
Yeah.
16, 17, 17, 18. Now we're talking 16.
Okay. But you're still supposedly retiring before this is going to be...
Well...
Yeah, you never know.
I don't think he's allowed to retire until he gets it done.
Okay. Any other discussion? I'm not sure if I went to the audience yet or not and there's anybody cared to speak to this? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number five is consideration of approving the 2014 city council regular meeting schedule. Mr. City Manager?
In order to comply with the requirements of the Open Meetings Act, council must establish the schedule of the council meetings for the upcoming year. Council wishes to continue holding their meetings on the first and third Monday of the month beginning at 7:00 PM. The following schedule is presented for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the 2014 city council meeting schedule as presented.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Our final item, item six, is consideration of closing city offices on certain dates in 2014 in conjunction with observed holiday closures. Mr. City Manager?
City council is scheduled to consider a request from the staff to close city offices on Friday, December 26th and Friday, January 2nd, December 26, 2014 and January 2nd, 2015 in conjunction with the observed holidays. And the current year council is allowing staff to utilize their own leave time in order to avoid working one day, work weeks after two days off for the holiday. Staff is making the request at this time so that if approved, the days can be placed on the city calendar so that all residents can notice, see that the offices are closed. After the request for the Christmas and New Years of '14 and '15, the next time this occurs for Christmas and New Years will be 2019 and 2020.
Thanks. Sir, is there a motion?
I move to approve the closing of city offices on Friday, December 26, 2014 and Friday, January 2, 2015 with the understanding employees must utilize accumulated leave time to be paid for these days since they're not recognized by the City of Richmond as official holidays.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. If, for example, an employee had zero time, they had run out of time, they used it all up for any number of reasons, what would happen? Employee just not...
They would either have to come in and work.
Were they allowed to come into work?
Probably.
Really?
Yep. Or they would not get paid for that day.
Okay. That's because contractual reasons?
Yep. Yeah, we've never, we've done this quite often through the years.
Yeah.
But we've never run into that but it'll probably be what happened.
Any other comments? Discussion? Any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to city manager's comments, sir.
Sunday, November 3 is the next senior social. Tickets go on sale next Tuesday for those over 60 interested in coming.
Very good. We move on to council comments. Michael?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. Dennis?
Good to go.
Jeff?
I want to thank the chamber for starting what hopes to be a fine tradition of the scarecrow contest. It was nice a lot of people got involved in that and it benefit for the city. Also, again, the, I believe the fire department open house is the 13th, but particularly a benefit, supposed to be a pancake breakfast benefit for firefighter Shadi who unfortunately has, have a serious illness to deal with.
Nothing at this time, sir.
Jeff?
No, I have to concur with Council Yarick about the scarecrows. I had a lot of really good feedback from that, that people actually got excited about looking at them and, you know, when they first came out, you would thought there was somebody sitting on the, you know, on the corner there, on, on setting on the bales. It's, it's quite impressive and they thought we should carry that on more often than just for Halloween, but...
Look at that rabbit's baby or something. It does look very nice, very nice job by the chamber. We have cable commission tomorrow night right here at City Hall at 7 o'clock. The planning commission will be meeting on the 10th at 7 o'clock here at City Hall. And as mentioned, there will be a fundraiser for paramedic and one of our volunteer firemen, Brian Shadi, and open house during fire prevention week this week from 7:00 AM till 3:00 PM. That's October 13th and there will be a pancake breakfast and all proceeds from the pancake breakfast and a can drive will go, and a bake sale will go for Brian Shadi and his family. I had pizza last night and we forgot that the other fundraiser was tonight. I had pizza again and it's sitting right there. But it's so nice to see how the community has come out for Brian and his family. There's been a lot of fundraiser, Uker Tournament, made just a lot of money that is going to be badly needed for Brian and it just, it's nice to see Richmond come together again and do, do wonderful things like that. But that will be on the 13th and then the library board meeting will be on the 14th. The community center will be closed on the 14th because of Columbus Day, so the county evidently must be shut down, so the Meals on Wheels is shut down. Is that why? Okay. So the 14th, our community center will be closed. The city council will have their quarterly roundtable meeting here at City Hall on the 15th at 6:30. It's definitely open to the public, 6:30 right here at City Hall. The EDC will be meeting on the 16th at 7:00 PM at City Hall.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Has that been...
That's been canceled.
Been canceled?
Yep.
For the month?
Uh, yes.
Okay. The EDC meeting's been canceled for the month of October. Then the 21st, which is two weeks from tonight, will be the next city council meeting. There has been a meeting set for the BZA. We just talked about it. They haven't met, you know, years and we have a BZA meeting on the 24th. That could be historic and maybe not be another one for another three, four years. But there will be a BZA meeting on the 24th of October at 7:00 PM right here at City Hall. The other thing is Halloween, we'll jump ahead here a few weeks, on the 31st, the City of Richmond will have trick or treating on the 31st, which is Thursday, from 6:00 to 8:00. That is our official time and I believe the chamber of Congress will go 5:00 to 7:00 in the city's parking lot on the north end of town with their treats in the street, which has turned out to be a tradition now. I don't believe there was anything else.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may?
Yes, you may.
We have put notices, or notices will be put in the paper, but we will be flushing hydrants this month starting Sunday night, October 20th at 11 o'clock at night and that flush on each shift runs till 7:00 AM. So it'll be from Sunday night, October 20th at 11 o'clock through the week until Friday morning at 7:00.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Is there anything else? Okay, we will move on. We have a closed session this evening. We need a motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion to convene into closed session in accordance with Section 8, C of Michigan Open Meetings Act, Public Act 267 of 1976, as amended for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement if either negotiating parties request a closed hearing.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Well, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Green? Yes. LaFleur?
Yes.
Mistravich?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Yarick?
Yes.
Goodard, yes.
Motion passes. We will go into closed session and reconvene after the closed session.